Okay, Ashley, can I have roll call, please?
Briggs.
Here.
Cavalier. Kressel.
Here.
Clatt.
Here.
Ved Branton.
Here.
Melby.
Here.
Jurdie.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Okay, it's time for the open forum. If anyone would like to address the council on any issue not on tonight's agenda, come to the podium, state first, last name and address, please.
Sure. Good evening. Michelle Christopherson, 723 Sunset Avenue, Crookston. I'm also the Director of Outreach and Engagement at the University of Minnesota Crookston, and I'm here for two reasons this evening. First, to thank you all and for the community of Crookston for coming out tonight to unite last Tuesday. Not only was I part of the planning committee, but it was just a wonderful opportunity for us to share our campus with you and the Crookston residents and the surrounding community members, so thank you for that. The second reason that I'm here this evening is to bring to your attention, as council members, that I have had an opportunity to meet with City Administrator Reynolds and Park and Rec Director Jake Solberg about four items that I would like to have you all discuss, not this evening, but perhaps in the near future. The Crookston Sports Center will host its first hockey, UMC Golden Eagle hockey game on October 14th, and my request to Park and Rec Director Jake Solberg and City Administrator Corky Reynolds included having beer and/or hard seltzer at the University of Minnesota Golden Eagle hockey games. The second is that we would like to have a curling league. I do know that we have a contract with the Crookston Sports Center along with the city, particularly through the Crookston campus. The third is that we would like to host a bong spiel or a curling tournament at some point, obviously working with the city and the schedule that might be available. If the decision for that is to move forward, then we also would like to host, hire a vendor, if possible, if the ordinance can be changed, to serve beer and hard seltzer at that curling tournament as well. And so I just wanted to lift that up, that I have had a chance to meet with both Jake and Corky on June 16th, and then again 10 days ago on the 28th of July, and so I look forward to having discussions with all of you on that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Chad, is there anybody on the phone bridge, please?
Oh, Your Honor, I'm on the phone bridge.
Okay.
Agent logged off.
Thank you. That brings us to the agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove anything from tonight's agenda? Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Got Tom and Don, thank you. Discussion. That roll call, please.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Kressel.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Ved Branton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jurdie.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Okay, this brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Clayton, is there a second?
Second.
Don?
Don, thank you. Roll call, please.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Excuse me. Aye.
Kressel.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Ved Branton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jurdie.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Okay, no public hearings, regular agenda. Ashley.
Yes, Your Honor. Item 8.01 is a resolution to approve drafts dispensing intoxicating liquor on premises at a community festival.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Make that motion.
Thank you. Delane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve, thank you. Discussion. Corky, a brief on this?
Yes, this is similar to last year. In conjunction with OX card days, these two, this organization has asked to be able to serve alcoholic beverages on Ash Street. They will have corned off area, they will have the ability to determine who has or will be served, and they also are catering, so this is permitted, and they're serving off their premises, so it is permitted.
Thank you. Further discussion? There ain't none, can I have roll call, please?
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Kressel.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Ved Branton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jurdie.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 8.02 is a resolution to approve Irishman shanty dispensing of intoxicating liquor off premises at a community festival.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. Joe, second.
Second.
By Clayton, thank you. Discussion. Corky?
Same thing, same rationale. It's a community festival, which we're allowed to do pursuant to Minnesota statute, and we can have licensed caterers serve off premises in conjunction with both their license and the festival.
Thank you. Further discussion? There ain't none, can I have roll call, please?
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Kressel.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Ved Branton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jurdie.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 8.03 is a resolution to approve the rehabilitation loan program, deferred loan repayment agreement and mortgage on the property owned by Richard and Teresa Generex.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Don, is there a second?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Christie. Discussion. Corky?
This is similar to items you've acted on in the past. This mortgage and loan was actually given in 2008. It is a deferred repayment loan, so that if the owners of the property maintained their ownership and interest in the property for five years, the loan would be forgiven. Five plus 2008 is 2013. They've done that, and they are now disposing of the property, and they want a mortgage satisfaction. I've reviewed the documents, they have satisfied those requirements.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Are there any more of these out there, any idea?
Actually, we don't know, councilmen. We believe that there are approximately 10 more, but these were managed by the Northwest Multi-County Housing, and they don't really have a good record of them either, but there are some more out there, and...
We'll just take them case by case.
We'll take them case by case when they come in, as these properties are disposed of.
Further discussion? There ain't none, can I have roll call, please?
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Kressel.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Ved Branton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jurdie.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Item 8.04 is an emergency ordinance regarding the sale of THC food and beverages.
Thank you, Ashley. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Clayton and Don, okay, we'll go on some discussion. Should I start, Corky or John?
Yes.
Why don't you go with John?
John, can I have, you say a few words, please?
Sure. Any particular place?
Right up here at the podium.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for letting me speak tonight. I think pretty much everyone knows our family history. We've been here since 1880, and I've had a variety of businesses in town over the years, and we've been in the hemp business out at the farms that we own. This will be our fourth licensed year with the Minnesota State and federal government as far as raising hemp. We're mostly in research and development. We don't sell very much retail, and that's been our driving force. But with the change in these laws, we feel that this is an opportunity both to provide service in these new products and also a business that we've been in for several years. You have a sheet in front of you, rather than me blabbing here, which I know, most of you know that after 40 years in the radio, I'm really good at that, so I'd rather entertain your questions and try to answer them in the best way that I can.
Could you explain, all the THC products are Colorado lab-tested?
Yes. Marijuana and hemp, all of that family of plants are unusual in the fact that they are an absorbing plant. So they, for instance, different than sugarbeets, soybeans, things that we're used to being raised in this area, these plants can't have anything put on them. If they're sprayed with a little bit of Roundup, not enough to kill them, the glysophate, heavy metals, pesticides, herbicides, anything, the plant absorbs it and puts it in its flowers. And of course, then, when people come along, whether the old traditional way of smoking it or now these new edible and drinkable delivery methods, those elements are in that product. And so, as part of the Minnesota laws, all the products that are sold as edible or drinkable have to be confirmed and tested by a lab that specializes in doing these kind of things. All the products that we have come from, they're grown in Minnesota, the laboratory that creates them is in Minnesota, then samples are sent off to a lab in Colorado, of course, which I think you all know is a recreational marijuana state, has been for some years and are quite sophisticated in how they operate, and they are approving all of the products before we get them, and they are labeled thusly, which is part of the Minnesota laws.
Is this medically prescribed, or is it anybody that can?
There are doctors that are suggesting that their patients try it when other pharmaceuticals don't work, but at the moment, it's against the law and has been since the beginning of the Hemp Act for us to say that this will cure your insomnia or take away your pain or do any of these things. It's an interesting thing that there's no one, no other product where the salesmen are told what they can and can't say. So we cannot embrace any kind of success in any kind of medical area, or really even in a feel-good area. That's forbidden as part of the Minnesota law, and that's why all of our products, and as I've mentioned here, you know, we are not here to, I can't tell you, the people that come in and say, "Well, you know, I don't sleep good, which one should I use?" And it's like, we can't tell you. I'm sorry, you have to do your research some other way.
So how many products do you sell?
Right now, we have two major products. This is getting a slow start because all of the other recreational states allow for a minimum of 10 milligrams, 10 million, 10 thousandths of a gram of product in one serving, and Minnesota is part of, we call it the 3-2 beer law. They've made it 5 milligrams. So every company that's making this product is having to gear up and then, of course, making sure that they have a maximum of half of the regular amount. So there's 5 milligrams of THC in any one serving that we can have, and then 10 of those servings in a child-resistant container.
John, did you approach the city prior to opening, asking about any ordinances or laws that were maybe in...
We did not, because we have engaged council down in Minneapolis. It's actually the lawyers that wrote this law. And they felt that it wasn't, you know, you don't have a business license for regular retail commerce, and that's what we think of ourselves, as regular retail commerce in an area zone for that.
Sure. And I would say, like, just listening to, like, the League of Minnesota Cities, they were talking about maybe a suggestion that is looking at these products very similarly to how we regulate or tax or have ordinances for tobacco products and alcohol and things of that nature, because it is still considered like a controlled substance, right? So I was just curious as to, to the thought on that. And then, is it just recent that you guys are able to actually utilize federally insured banks?
Yes.
Because my understanding was...
It took a lot of work to have Bremer say that we can make our deposits there.
Yeah.
And now we'll be able to have credit cards, too.
Okay.
And back to one of the comments that you made, that I would like to, this, these are not, how did you describe the products?
Controlled substance.
These are not controlled substances anymore, not in Minnesota. So that's...
But they're still considered, they're legal drug, right? Isn't it?
Federally, I think, but not state.
Yeah.
Federal law still considers them to be controlled substances. Minnesota changed. The law was passed and in effect on July 1st for sales, but the classification went from Schedule 1 to Schedule 2.
Schedule 2 drug, okay.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
And then, I'm sorry, the first, it was like a string of questions there. What was your first?
I was just, I was just mentioning what Minnesota, League of Minnesota Cities had kind of talked about a little bit there, and how a lot of cities are managing with ordinances.
You bet, and we don't have any problem at all of you guys developing, you know, a process for us to be licensed like an alcohol or tobacco place in town might be. That is, I'm not here to challenge that or disagree with that in any way. What we would like to do, however, is keep operating while these things are developing.
So you'd be willing to work with our administrator and whoever's on a committee or whatever to sit down and establish guidelines and how we want to go, which would be good for us and yourself?
Absolutely, and legal counsel would, our legal counsel would love to be a part of that, because this is a thing that's happening, you know, across Minnesota, and they're the folks that actually penned the bill, so, yes.
Well, that's not exactly, they didn't actually pen the bill. They presented the bill, and it was done in committee and then passed out. They were significant force, but it was not entirely them.
I'm sorry that I misspoke. Those are just the vernacular that I use and the fact that they, you know, were the driving force behind making this happen.
I'm curious, who are your customers?
Well, that's an interesting thing. You know, we have cameras that are operating, but of course, they're, it's wiped out right away. But you would be surprised that it's not maybe what you might think of from the television and the movies. Our customers are just regular people, some that are coming in for pain relief, some that are coming in because instead of a glass of wine, they would like to have a gummy or two in the evening. Some people are on what are called microdosing, and I don't know if any of you have heard that, or, but it's where they're taking just a little bit of one serving, like, every hour or so, and it's giving them a pain relief or a relief of discomfort in some way that they haven't found with any of the regular pharmaceutical drugs.
Thank you.
Corky, any other questions for John?
So when, when did it become, I guess, legal to use credit cards, and is that, is that in all states or just Minnesota?
I can only speak about Minnesota, I'm sorry.
Because I, I remember talking to somebody, and it was a totally strict trend, a cash transaction, where you had to get cash from the customer, and you had to take all that cash to someplace to deposit it and...
Exactly. We've already been hooked up with two different credit card companies at the minute that they found out that there was hemp products, even if those would have been hemp purses, hemp paper, you know, something pretty innocuous, dropped us instantly. We now have a provider in Minnesota that is willing to take us on and has taken on, for instance, when we buy the product from the manufacturer, we're paying with a credit card to him, and we're using that same, we'll be soon using that same service. Most people who come in want to buy with credit cards. We find that they buy a little less because they only have so much cash with them, where they probably would have spent more on a credit card.
So then, is your product taxed similar to, like, other products that are sold over the counter, like?
And I didn't hear, you mean, sales tax? Yeah, it's a retail agricultural Minnesota product, yes. So it would carry the same regular sales taxes as anything that's not tax-free in the state.
But it's not high, it's not taxed as highly as, like, alcohol sales?
No, there's no separate, like, alcohol stamp or tax or anything on it at this time, and I would hope that you wouldn't consider that, because we are competing with the illegal guys that, you know, have access to the, every town in Minnesota because of the highways and things. Our prices are literally set by the street price of this product that has been for several
Further questions?
I just have one. What lab tests your product in Colorado? And where's it located?
And I'm really sorry, I don't have that for you. It's on the bottle, you know, there's, and I will get that for you. I just don't have it on, you know, with me right at the second, but happy to provide that.
Can I also, sorry, when you talk about the lawyers that you were working with who have penned the bill or part of the committee, can you tell me who that is?
I can, but again, Carol Moss is our attorney.
Attorney Ross?
I'm sorry?
Attorney Ross? Cynthia Ross?
No, Carol Moss.
Carol Moss.
Carol Moss. And it, but she works in a large law firm in Minneapolis, Helmut and someone...
Okay.
Mr. Reynolds might know that, but I...
Do you have any proposed ordinances or materials from them now that you could present to them?
You guys, you know, up to now, it's either been ignorance or an all moratorium. You guys could be actually creating, you know, a new guideline for this for the state of Minnesota.
And that, that will be part of what I present to you when John is done.
If that's mine, I apologize, I thought I had them turned off.
That's your attorney calling.
Actually, she is waiting, so.
Are you breaking any laws being opened?
We feel that we are not. And our sad one, we are accused that we are.
Further discussion by council?
I guess my question by this emergency ordinance here, if we pass this, does that shut John down?
Yes, it does.
Now, I just look at this, you know, if this was a alcohol-related, say, a microbrewery, you know, we don't have an ordinance for that yet, but would we be sitting here and saying we're going to shut them down, because they're both intoxicating deals? And my theory on this is, we're kind of, should have had this done, having something on the books by now. It's legal. It's legal in Minnesota.
Well, it's been legal for, like, four weeks, five weeks, which I'm just relatively just thinking about it.
But at this point, when we're making this decision, it's legal.
Yeah.
So, and if this was a microbrewery, we wouldn't be saying, oh, just want to shut it down. We all, we've all talked about this two years ago, about a microbrewery getting stuff together to be able to do a microbrewery, so they come in, they're ready to go open up, and we still haven't finished that. That's two and a half years ago.
So, so if we, if we vote aye for this, right now we're shutting them down?
Yes. It can go into effect immediately, and that's part of my presentation.
So, so that is, is it possible to, instead of shutting it down, I mean, can we, can, is it possible to say, hey, let's give us some time, a month or so, to figure this out and figure out some guidelines and how we want to do this? Is that, is that possible?
Your question, yes, it is possible. I think the timeline you suggest is improbable.
Okay.
And, like, whenever you're ready, I can tell you, okay. So the reason I put this on the agenda tonight is because we became recently aware of this store being open, and you really have only two choices. You really have, do you impose a moratorium on this business and shut it down, or do you let it continue to operate as it has been operating? At this point, there's no middle ground. I have contacted the League of Minnesota Cities regarding this and read their materials that they provide. There is no middle ground. They do not have guidance for us because they were surprised that this actually came through. I think that would be a fair characterization. What Councilman Erickson talks about, two years ago, a year ago, we should have been, no one was anticipating this to happen. Okay? Fair statement?
Even the people who penned the bill or wrote it, were part of the bill, were completely surprised when it passed.
So having to jumpstart this just wasn't there.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I brought it on for your consideration tonight for that very reason. Some of the factors to consider are, you know, what are the issues here? Well, local regulation, whether it be taxation, whether it be different zoning, the number of things that the city can do take time to consider and implement. And you all know, we rely on the League of Minnesota Cities, we rely on our councils in the cities to help guide us. They don't have anything. The Minnesota Department of Pharmacy is supposed to be testing. They're not. They're not testing. They don't have the mechanisms to do that, so they're letting it go. Where are you going to let us sell? Walmart going to sell, our gas station's going to sell, our, our restaurant's going to sell. Now, under the alcohol and tobacco, off-sale can't sell. On-sale, open question. Can you sell it out of your house? Can you sell it wherever you want? What about pop-ups? What about transient? It's a wide-open question in this state. It's also a wide-open question in Crookston. What do you, I mean, that's a fair statement. What do you want to do here? It's going to take time to craft ordinances, and as John indicated, whatever we do, we're right on the cutting edge if we start crafting ordinances. And how are we going to deal with this? As he indicated, who's going to enforce that the wrappers can't look like they're enticing to children? Who's going to enforce whether it's been infused properly? Who's going to enforce whether it's five micrograms? Who's going to enforce that? The state, thank you, kicked the can down the road. They've put it on local government.
So, so, local government, is it, is it possible to let local government, City of Crookston, levy a tax? Let's, I mean, look, look at the tax on alcohol in the state. I mean, they, the, the tax on alcohol in the state is, it's a lot. I don't know what it is, but it's a lot.
And tobacco.
So, I mean, so...
Is it possible? Yes.
So a city, a city can do that, and we don't have to follow any state guidelines to do that.
There aren't any.
There aren't any.
So what that legislation was crafted said, it is now legal to sell certain products which contain, now remember, it's hemp, not marijuana, not, you know, it's eight and nine that you can sell.
Nine only. I'm sorry. Nine only.
You can't sell eight, you can't, if they develop a 10...
There is a 10, and it has been for sale in Crookston for a couple of years.
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys know, but these products have been being sold in your town for at least two years.
With the THC?
I'm sorry?
With the THC or just the CBD?
Well, the CBD had THC, there was no, see, it can only have .3 THC in it, but a gummy that's only .3 THC has more than 5 milligrams of the product.
Of the product.
In it.
It can have, it has to have both of those per serving, and you can only package 10 of them in a package. So that's the guidance we get from the legislature.
So a couple, couple, couple of questions here for, for, like, alcohol sales. There's, there's law enforcement that goes around and monitors, you know, that establishments are doing it correctly.
Yes.
So who would go around to make sure that the products that are being sold are, fit the, fit the standard that is given? I mean, is that something that, that our police department would have to do, and how do they know? I mean, what the content is? I mean, let's just say, let's just say, you know, and please don't take this the wrong way, I'm just throwing out some scenarios, okay, so...
That's really great. I have an answer to some of your questions.
Okay, well, let me finish my question.
Yeah, okay.
So let's just say that they wanted to sell some stronger stuff through their store. Who, who regulates that? How do they get caught?
Well, it's supposed to be the Minnesota Department of Pharmacy. That's supposed to do this. They're not doing that. I'm not sure, but I would suggest that our police department does not have apparatus and equipment to go be testing, let alone the know-how. Now, to whom it's sold, they can certainly monitor that. Um, and the effects, if you were to drive, they can monitor that because it's still illegal to drive while under the influence of this particular product. So, they can monitor that. It also imposes some issues for employment just within the city. If we have CDL operators, they can't have it.
Great, because that's, that's, that's regulated by the federal.
Right, but if we have people, let's say, in other occupations, they can possess it, probably have it in their system as long as it doesn't impair their ability to do their function. So, this is a real, it's a real quagmire. It's a real interesting thing, but as a city council, you all can only deal with it on two levels. Is there gonna be a moratorium? Or is it gonna go forward as it is now? It will take time with the help of, whether it's the Cannabis Council, whatever we wanna call them in the state if they have proposed guidelines, working with local jurisdictions to set this up. Now, there's talk that this will be looked at again in the next legislative session. That doesn't happen till January. What will happen? Who knows?
So, the other, oh, go ahead.
Is there a way we can table this so we can look into it more?
Well, tabling would effectively allow what's happening to continue to happen. Um, yeah, I mean, yes, it can be tabled, um, but I just, I want to, you know, understand that bringing this forward for your consideration was in no way saying that this organization was doing anything wrong. It's getting it in front of you to talk about the health, safety, and welfare of the community. That's all it is.
Well, the other thing is, is, I mean, it's business and it's tax dollars for the City of Crookston currently, right? If they, if they continue to operate.
Well, what tax dollars would they be giving the city?
I don't know.
No, I mean, as I understand it, you don't own this building, you rent.
We rent the building.
Yep.
Yeah, they rent the building, so there's not.
So, the, the sales of it creates no revenue for the City of Crookston?
Not for the city at this time.
It's a sale.
That would be part of a ordinance if you were to have one.
Yeah, I mean, you could impose an additional tax. And then guidance, I mean, as, as some have indicated, alcohol and tobacco have extra tax.
But please, but please consider that this can be shipped within the state of Minnesota by everybody except the United States Post Office. And you will not get taxed on any of that if you, you know, if you impose the equivalent of an alcohol tax on it, and our prices have to be that much higher, then all you'll be doing is driving people to another city, to the county line, to Moorhead, or to the, the internet.
And that's not what we're talking about tonight. But that's down the road. That's the formulation, and that's what made this so difficult, is the legislation that came out of the state legislature was so broad and it gave nobody, no one, really guidance other than the testing requirements and the five milligrams of that kind of thing.
But there is some guidance. This is the checklist that the Board of Pharmacy has put out for police departments.
Right.
And, you know, on the very bottom, it says that the jurisdiction belongs to them, not to, not to who's ever in my store or who, whatever is decided. If, if we're doing something wrong, it just needs to be a violation that's filled out and turned in to them.
Now, if we take this under advisement, or if we say, okay, can we pass such a thing as to right now, you would just have to have, be permitted in order to sell this within the boundaries of the City of Crookston so that we would have a idea of how many people are selling it, who's selling it, in what areas they're selling it, are they selling out of their home? I mean, they'd have to, it's like Tupperware, I mean, you know, can you, can you limit that so that it has to be in a brick and mortar? Or it has to be just registered where they're gonna be selling their product out of?
That can all be done, but that's down the road. That's not this.
Can you start that, though? So that instead of putting a moratorium on it, you just say, okay, but anybody else that comes in here, and maybe including John too, is gonna have to start off with a permit first that gets approved by the city? Whether it be with background checks or whatever it is, and a, maybe a, a permit to cover our expenses?
Can't do that under this ordinance. No, this is an emergency ordinance.
No, I'm saying if we ditched this one.
Well, we don't have an ordinance before, before us. We don't have that.
So, but can we make that?
So, if the moratorium.
Don't worry about it.
Why can't we, you know, work with those businesses and, and draw it up with them, with their knowledge and, and our knowledge, and have a, a piece of paper work for both? I just think that right away, we wanna get rid of it. I mean, it's been open for a day. And right away, we wanna close it down. East Grand Forks has got two of them, Thief River's got one of them. It's just a matter of time. Everybody's gonna have it, and I just, I think we're doing the wrong thing by shutting it down. I think we gotta be proactive and get a plan in place and be quick at it. I mean, there's no reason why we can't start drafting things for these people to say, you know what? This is what we're gonna do for, to start out with. You can always add to it. I mean, nothing's written in stone where we can't change it. I mean, we gotta work with the way, everything changes, and we're just gonna sit back and not change anything. I think we should, we're gotta be proactive in this and get a, what works for the City of Crookston, what works with the businesses that come in, he's not gonna be the only one coming in. If they change it in the, in the, in the government in Minnesota, shuts them all down anyway.
Yeah.
So, we don't have to worry about it, you know? And if it does keep on in Minnesota, we'll have a good start on this when you got ten of them coming up instead of all of a sudden, you got ten of them here, how do you deal with that now? We don't have anything that, like you said, he didn't have to call anybody or do anything. He did his homework on it. He bought the product. He opened his store. It's legal.
And I'd rather have him.
We need to be proactive about doing this to say, you know what? Let's work with an ordinance that works for both them and us as a city so we can have what we want in there, working with them. You know, it just, it just makes sense to me to not cancel it and get rid of everything.
I, I agree with you, uh, Mr. Erickson. Now, Corky, I have a question. If we table this now, we keep them open, it gives us an opportunity to negotiate with?
Well, you're not really negotiating here.
But we're setting an ordinance.
I think it's really important for you all to understand, this isn't something you do in a week.
Right.
This isn't something you do in a month.
Well, it'll give us an opportunity to work together and.
Well, by, by table it, Tom, you just vote nay.
Yeah, you just vote nay.
Right, yeah.
So, it's not.
Please understand, this is an up and down vote, and it's, there's no right and there's no wrong. It's what you decide. This is the way it had to be brought before you. Under our emergency ordinance, three point zero seven of our charter, it had to come this way so you can decide. Yep.
So, um, Chief Selsler have anything?
Well, I'm just getting to him. East Grand Forks has two stores that are open. They are doing exactly the same thing we are. They are talking about a moratorium, they are talking about leaving it as it is. Thief River Falls doing exactly the same thing. I wish Councilman Erickson were as simple as you suggest.
I'm not saying it's simple, but you gotta start somewhere, you know?
Absolutely.
You know, if, if you let this go, you shut them down, we drop the ball, we don't do anything for the next year and a half, all of a sudden it comes back.
It can't be that long. It can only be a year.
Can't be over a year.
Well, whatever, but I'm just saying a year, and then they come back and there's ten of them to deal with.
Yeah.
You know, I'd rather start an ordinance and, yeah, it's gonna take a year. But it's, it's the, we can get some of it written fairly quick, I think, to, to say, you know what? They have, the main thing is to let them come in and say, if you come to Crookston, we have to know that you're here. Now, we know. The police department knows. We know that they're open, and it's one of those things, yeah, and build off of that. You know, if we're just gonna throw it out the window and, and it stays legal, we're gonna have a mess in the end. Just my opinion, but.
John, can I ask, do you guys have to be, um, registered with the state?
No, you don't. We have hemp licenses because this is the business we're in.
Yeah.
But anybody could approach the, as we know, three manufacturers right now in Minnesota, and with a minimum order, they ship the product up with a credit card, and you can start selling it, as he said, like Tupperware. And the internet is our big, gonna be our biggest competition.
Sure.
No different than any of the other businesses that have a product that can be shipped.
And that's, that is actually, I mean, you could have a pop-up on Broadway.
Yeah.
You could sell it out of your house as it stands now. Those are the things that need to be looked at. But Chief Selsler, do you have some comments for the council to consider?
So, before I leave, I just wanna invite you all to please drop by our store, see that we are going above and beyond the law with the demarcation zone within the store, and that, and how we treat customers, and how we identify customers that are valuable property for us.
Do you limit the number of customers as Colorado does who can be in your facility at one time?
We certainly would, but so far, that's not been the problem.
Do you? Do you?
We do it, we've not considered that, but certainly.
And you know Colorado does that.
Yeah, yeah, well, because, uh, you know, I just had friends that were there, and in a store about twelve feet by fifteen feet, there was ten bud tenders, and every one of them was as busy as they could be. Unfortunately, we're not busy like that, so it's a valid thing to consider, and we'd certainly embrace it if it was.
No, but I'm just, I'm just asking because there are so many questions.
Yes.
As you know and articulate that need to be addressed. And quite frankly, I'm not taking a position, I hope you all understand that, I brought it here so you could talk about it, decide what to do, and move forward without delay. To be fair to the citizens, to be fair to John Wrightmeyer in this matter, um, I think.
So, I mean, one other question, so if I wanted to just start this product up out of my house, wouldn't, nobody would probably even know?
Exactly. Because as he says, doesn't it, no seller has to let you know you're in here.
Yeah, I, I, I just don't, I think it's.
Well, the state would know because you'd have to do the state taxes, otherwise you're gonna be.
Right, but I mean, neighbor probably wouldn't know if I didn't say nothing or whatever. I mean, it'd be, it could be.
Right, that's, I'm saying they should be registered.
Let's have the chief tell us what he thinks we need to know as a, as you all as a council.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Council. Um, I'm just gonna touch a little bit on a lot of probably what has kind of been said. Um, hopefully, I can answer maybe a few more questions or put some clarification to some of the questions or some of those that might be lingering along, right? So, and again, kinda like Corky said, I'm not really taking a position on this. My perspective is from the law enforcement, enforcement side, right? So, like, like we always say, my job as Crookston Police Chief is to do what? Protect, ensure the health, welfare, and safety of every community member from elderly to children. How do I do that? I do that by looking at everything through the lens of what is in the best interest of public safety or making Crookston community as safe as possible, right? That's my main job as a police chief. That is the same approach I took when looking at these new laws allowing the sale of edible THC. The City of Crookston currently requires our businesses or transient merchants such as food trucks to have a license to sell alcohol, tobacco, food, and many other consumer products, whether that be from door-to-door retail or again in, in a food truck capacity. Why do we require these licenses, right? For several reasons. One, to conduct background checks on the businesses or employees selling these products, right? So, we as a city know who and what is being sold throughout the community. That state and local regulations such as health guidelines in the case of an edible or consumable product are being followed, and that these businesses are properly insured. That's not something we made up, that's something we already do, correct? When the edible THC law was passed, I wanted to know, what are the regulations or what are some of the guidelines that govern the sale of edible THC? Some of the questions I asked, similar to what we've been talking about here today. Are businesses that sell edible THC in retail sales required to obtain a state license or local license? The answer is no, right? Is there a state regulatory agency checking that edible THC being sold, like we have said before, contains, contains the correct milligrams of THC per serving or per package? That the individuals purchasing the edible THC are over the age of twenty-one? That the packages being la, are, are being labeled properly? And that the container is child and tamper resistant? That these products are branded and not marketed for children? That the businesses are not selling ingredients other than hemp-derived THC? And the answer to every question is no, right? We don't know. In fact, and John touched on this, the state has said regulatory oversight falls on the responsibility of the local municipality. So, when I look at the big picture, this is again for me as chief of police, or what's in the best interests of public safety when it comes to edible THC, I worry about those who are most at risk or risk factors. Our children, our edible, our, our elderly, mixing edible THC with prescribed medications or other substances, misuse, overconsumption of edible THC. And again, let me be clear, and I think that's very clear amongst all of us, I am not singling out any specific business, business owners, nor am I trying to permanently shut down any business, right? I am requesting, um, that our council grants the temporary emergency ordinance to establish a moratorium on the sale of edible THC, the same as many states throughout Minnesota are currently doing. Many, many. Corky mentioned some, there's many metro states. It's, it's commonly becoming more common practice. So, we wanna do the moratorium, so what we can do, right? Study and draft ordinances detailing regulatory oversight. Zoning regulations, where are we going to allow these THC dispensaries? Do we want them in proximity to schools, parks, daycare centers, residential housing, or other retail business? How about hours of operation? We restrict hours of operation on alcohol. That's an intoxicant, why wouldn't we do that on this? The city needs to, as Delain mentioned, I'm sorry, Councilman Clatt mentioned, city needs to establish compliance checks, right? Similar to what we currently have in place for alcohol and tobacco. Licensing and background checks on the merchants selling edible THC. We require our current businesses to follow specific rules, ordinances, licensing, and zoning guidelines, many of which I've discussed and brought up tonight. I think it's only fair to take a pause to allow city government the time needed to establish applicable rules and regulations for businesses that wanna sell edible THC, the same as we require from every other business. That's my position on that.
So, chief, uh, if we, if we, if we go through this moratorium and somebody in town decides to, I mean, they're, how, how do we catch, somebody does it out of their house, how do we catch them? And whatever they're doing is not illegal, of cour, I mean, there's nothing that police department can do to them, is there?
Currently, no. So, that's again, there is currently nothing on the books that would regulate that. If we take the time to write the rules and regulations, establish ordinances that would prohibit that, or restrict that, or make them by license, then we would know, right? Because they would or should have to have come to us before they would open them establishment.
And I agree, but if we do this moratorium, we're only penalizing this gentleman and not the people that are currently selling it out of their homes.
They're, to my knowledge, the only dispensary is, um, owned by John.
Okay.
Walmart is not selling. I have checked around. Currently, we do not have any other dispensaries in the City of Crookston as of today or to my knowledge.
But the scary part to me is, so they could go on city limits on a county road and put up a sign and sell it and be legal.
Unless the county did what we were doing and tried to establish different rules and regulations, they currently could, correct? I think it's bigger issue than trying to prohibit the sales or shut down a business. That's not the goal here. It, it's law. It's, it's happening. We need to accept it, right? I think the bigger picture is in the best interests of public safety. We need to take a step back. We need to set these rules, guidelines, regulations so that we can regulate it, just plain and simple. It's now easily or more readily available to our youth, same as it is to buy alcohol and everything else. Why wouldn't we regulate that? Why wouldn't we monitor that?
I don't disagree with some of that, but I also agree with, I'd much rather having him selling it out of John's business, and we know where it's at, and he's, he's trying to do the right thing by, by his business. I'd rather see him doing it and we get busy and write something up. If we've got the alcohol and tobacco and all that stuff, use them as a guideline and let's get going on that. And leave him, leave him have his business go.
So, and I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, uh, Tom, and, and the Wrightmeyers have been extremely wonderful to talk to, and I think their heart's in the right place, and I think that they will do everything according to state statute and ordinance. The problem with that is you're not giving us any time to put those procedures in place, right? So, everything you just explained, selling out of your house, um, just selling pop-up businesses, transient merchants, there's no authorization or control over that. So, by just continuing to let it go forward while we're preparing these ordinances and regulations or tax laws or however that looks, which could take four to six months, right? To author those, get those approved by council, run them back through, get them, I mean, it, it's gonna take time, and I think, you know, three to four months or to the end of the year is not unreasonable. You know, um, Steve made a point, why weren't we on top of this? Arguably, this was effective August first. There's two parts to that law, right? I mean, this is brand new. We weren't able to get ahead of this because it wasn't a thing a month ago, right? So, again, as your police chief, I'm asking us to just take a step back. Again, it's happening, it's coming, it's, it's here. We just need to prepare and establish these rules and guidelines. It's left up to us as the local municipality or me as chief of police to guide, regulate, and enforce this, and there's nothing on the books. Steve talked about microbreweries. There's, there's ordinances on the books discussing alcohol sales, where you can, can't sell alcohol, taxes, everything else. There is not for edible THC.
And it sounds somewhat odd that there aren't anything because Minnesota is pretty regulatory in what it does, but it was, it was, it was a surprise. I think from a council standpoint, we admit that, I think John will admit that, it was a surprise. No one was ready.
I hope I can speak to him when he's finished because I want to address some of the things.
But it was a surprise.
Yes.
There were, the League of Minnesota Cities, which is generally on top of and actually making legislation or helping make it, completely surprised.
And I just, I'll end, I hope we don't turn this into a debate back and forth tonight. I, the moratorium is the issue, I hope we stay focused on that. I'd be happy to talk to John, anybody after this for further clarification or, or anything. My facts are from League of Minnesota Cities and/or other state statutes, so unless there's any other question, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
And again, that, that is the issue. And again, that is the issue. I don't think there's any question that any of us would disagree that this is coming.
It's here. It's not coming. It's here.
Faster than anybody thought, and what do you do about it?
So, I mean, a question could be at the end of the day, by having this business sell this, would that have a favorable impact or a negative impact on the sale of illegal drugs in our town? And I'm thinking probably not.
I don't think that it's going to lessen the amount of legal or non-controlled substance being sold. I don't necessarily agree with selling THC in the city of Crookston or having dispensaries. You know, statistics show you why. Doesn't mean that it doesn't happen and it's not here. I think it's not good for our community. But that's not for me to decide. State statute already said it's here, so. That's my position, always will be. Again, in the best interest of public safety in our community, and that's what I feel is the best at this current time for our community.
Thank you.
You know, with that, I've already gotten phone calls on this. And I got one that he, you know, they left a voice message and they can play it to you later, but he's saying that, you know, we're always trying to do things in Crookston and trying to be proactive and ready to go. But it's like, here you got a chance to get ahead of the game. And especially with these young folks that can travel all over the United States and work out of their basement, work out of any any house, you know, as long as they got good internet. This is some of the things that these guys enjoy. My son's down in Phoenix and they do them. I don't do them when I go there, but they do. And that's just the younger generation of how they're going. And I mean, yeah, a lot of people disagree with alcohol, but we still do that. There's a lot of bad that happens with tobacco. We do that. People have to learn to make their own, you know, their own decisions. The state tells us that these are, this is legal. I think that we got to let it go. The only thing I'd like to say is if we could let this continue, but then get an ordinance saying that they have to and include John, have to get a permit to, you know, to start with and just have it so it has to be, you know, you have to be permitted in town in order to do that. So you wouldn't have your pop-ups and that without knowledge of who's doing what. And that would be the start. And that would probably make us go a little bit quicker on getting this ordinance drawn up or drafted. And you can use a lot of the stuff from alcohol, you know, for time limits and for, you know, dates, if you want them to sell on Sunday or not, or if they have to buy a special permit to, you know, there's a lot of things that we can take right off of that, so.
I feel the same way. I was against this on Friday. I sat with Corky, brought it up in chief, and I was totally against this. But I made, I did a lot of homework this weekend and I called 25, 30 people. And I had one person that was concerned about it. The rest of them were like, it's a business. You know, it's legal Minnesota. He's not breaking any rules. We're, I feel we're over whatever, and I think constituents, you know, there's going to be some definitely against this, but there's a lot that's going to be for this. He's opening up a business. He did his homework. You know, there's going to be 30 more of him. I'd rather, like Wayne said, if we can put a rush on this, I mean, I know Corky, it's not going to happen overnight, but we can get something written up tomorrow that says, if you open a store like this in Crookston, Minnesota, you have to get a permit. We should be able to vote on that next council meeting. Now, anybody that comes into Crookston, I know it's, you know, it's not super simple, Corky, but at the end of the day, we have to start somewhere.
And again, I'm not taking a position, I think your timeline...
Your smile took a position.
What's that?
Your smile showed your position.
The timeline, not next week. I fully think this is here. It's something that is doable. But we need to be just, I'm saying it doesn't happen that quickly.
Can you answer that question? Can it happen with the basics for starting this? Of having to have a permit and a background check?
Can it start with just that? Sure, that's what you want.
You know, and then with them knowing if they are coming to get a permit, they know that this is coming. You know, that within the next so much time, it could be A, B, C, D, E.
I agree. I don't think it has the permit. It's just a documentation that you're getting a permit that you're here. I mean, initially, I don't think it needs to be anything more than that until we get down the road and figure out, you know, what else we want to add to the ordinance.
Yeah, we have somebody selling it out of their house or whatever, they have to get a permit. We know that they're selling it out of their house. You know, and if they're, if they're the municipality is the person that's got to check this, I mean, at least they know what's going on there. If we don't do anything, they're going to do business as usual unless, you know, how do you judge that? Or how do you police that? You don't. I mean, there's no way to do that.
Steve, the question that was before us is do we want to shut down a legal business? A business that's legal in our area? That's the question before us. And I don't know, I don't think...
I have a question, and it's kind of maybe a little bit off topic, but how, I thought a city couldn't stop what the state was like mandating. So for example, the state was mandating businesses be shut down during COVID. So why at that time could the city, if it was in all of our best judgment, to say, hey, no, we're not doing that here? What's the difference between this and that?
Because this is legal. And you need, under our charter, we can have an emergency ordinance, which this council could pass, saying in the best interest and welfare of this city, this business is shut down. They could do that. We can't under our charter. We're a charter. It was kind of flipped during COVID. And again, this is here. This is going to happen. How are we going to, well, the question is, are we going to regulate? We don't have to. We don't have to do anything if we don't want to.
But we just want to get it up and started here, and then that committee or whatever, or however you would decide to do that, will come back with what they think should be the ordinance that we run under.
So then, council member, so if you don't pass it tonight, then we could have 10, 12, 20, 75 from now until that committee is finished with that permit?
And that's why I'm saying, can you make a permit tomorrow that says you have to buy a permit and pay a fee to be open in the city of Crookston? Is that legal for us to do?
I mean, we could set the fee since we're not creating any, getting any tax out of it. We could set the fee.
Well, if we look at alcohol as an example, there are many things that go into the amount of the fee. But there are also how you define the seller, when you can be open, all those kinds of things. You can do that, but you can set the fee. I mean, this organization could challenge it if they say, well, that's unreasonable. That doesn't bear any relationship to our business. Could be challenged. I mean, I'm not saying it will be because I don't know what the fee would be. But sure, you can do that. It would be unique, and we are one of the first to be talking about what kind of ordinances. There are ones that have taken moratoriums. Stillwater, St. Joseph, Marshall, they've imposed emergency moratoriums. Not saying it's right. But you got to take a look at it broadly, I believe. And how are you going to regulate something that's here and is going to be here? It's going to be here, and it's going to be more inclusive and permissive, let's be frank, in the future. It's going to be.
Well, that's why if it's going to be here and we're not going to stop it, I agree. Let's get something going within the next day or two that you got to have a permit so we know who's got it. You know, at least you have that much. You know, because like you say, it's going to be here. We're not going to stop it. At least get that much of it here so we know who's doing it. You know, at least if the police need to go to check a place, if they go check it and we don't have nothing in there, we can't do anything about it anyway.
It would have to be to the next council or you'd have to have a special council meeting.
If we needed a special council meeting, let's do that and get it done with.
And again, the question is...
First, you got a thumbs up or thumbs down on this?
Moratorium or no moratorium? That's the question.
I think we should vote.
Let's vote.
Anything more to add, John?
Yes, if I may.
And I too don't want to make it a back and forth argument. That's not. I just want to correct one thing you said, chief, is that I did not say that I think the city should regulate it. I think that it should be not regulated, just as the Minnesota statutes have put it out. I respect your opinion on it, and I certainly understand why. But I also think of myself as a law-abiding citizen that wants to follow the laws and rules. The other thing that I just really want to drive home is you're all talking about this as though it's within our city. But different than a brewery, it's hard to make alcohol and sell it Friday night at 10 o'clock on the street. It's really easy to get 100 bottles of this stuff and sell it out of your pocket. And also the internet, you know, like with my travel business, we went to a local business and had shirts and hats done significantly more money because we buy locally whenever we can. We bought everything we can for this store locally. But we are still in competition with the internet that will ship in a product that we don't know its origin, we don't know its testing, we don't know its strength, we don't know its efficient delivery of the product, and it's cheaper. So every time you talk about a tax or a fee or anything more than, you know, I understand you need to have money to cover your costs. But if you start looking at it as a profit center, everybody's going to find a way to jump out of that center and still deliver the product. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, let's call for the vote, please.
Corky, I have one question. The nay is to not shut them down and go ahead.
A vote yes on this means the moratorium would be imposed. A no vote means no moratorium. Clear?
Nay. Is there, can I just clarify also? Is there the ability to have a moratorium at a later date if we have more information or more educated?
Absolutely. Under the emergency ordinance, you could do that at any time. And I also want you to know, if you've read the materials, seven, it takes seven yes or ayes to impose the moratorium.
Vote.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Nay.
Kressel?
Nay.
Clatt?
Nay.
Bedbroughton?
Nay.
Melby?
Nay.
Jerdy?
Nay.
Erickson?
Nay.
Okay. Motion fails.
We have Don. Can I have a second?
All right. Thank you for your time. Moving on to reports and staff. Corky?
Well, as you might appreciate, I spent a little time on what we just discussed during the last week. I think it's been beneficial for all of you to know what's going on. Also, we're in budgeting. Ryan is not here tonight, but we worked significant amount of time on the budget process. We've also worked with Jake and his department with the Blue Line Club on a number of items about hockey and those types of items. But yeah, we've been, we've been real busy as a city staff. Also, later on, we will be calling for organizations who want city funding to present to the council. That process and that is now online. So if an organization in the city wants to approach the council for funding, they will be given the materials online, and I believe that that's going to be on...
The 2023 funding budget.
Will be in three weeks. I think that's the time we're going to have the actual presentations to the council. So be aware, if you're an organization that would like funding from the council, get the documents, all those that are required are online, and get them in as soon as possible to Ryan or myself.
Funding for what?
Well, some of the organizations, like the Downtown Partnership has asked for money. The senior citizens have come for supplemental funding. If you're one of those organizations who you believe needs and wants and can justify funding, there may be none, but we need those applications in so they can be reviewed and then presented to this council.
Corky, has that been advertised or are we just reaching out to people who have requested in the past? Like, how does that access happen?
Not particularly advertised, but organizations in the past have been turning in some materials. But we thought we'd broaden it by putting it on our website and making it available because there are some who haven't been funded who didn't think to even ask. So we're trying to reach out to a broader base. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'll start with Chief Frowver tonight.
Thank you, your honor. Just a couple of quick things here tonight. Kind of like Michelle said here, Nighty Night was very successful. A lot of people out there. It was a lot of fun. And it was just very, very busy. So another great night put on by the committee that worked on that, so I want to thank them. We did get our new siren installed over by Holiday, and after a glitch, we got that working. So that's, hopefully we can put that project away for the year now. So, and it's going to be a big, quite an improvement in the outdoor warning system of our city. And then we all have to turn our heads towards Oxcart, which is coming up next week, of course, which is huge event for the city. The fire guys are real busy getting stuff ready for that. And it's been really good. Be a good time. Last Thursday night, the fire department and Firefighters Association did some training on the river, working on some different operations, rescue, recovery, and also containment if we ever have hazardous materials or something spilt in the river, and that went extremely well. And working with Park and Rec on doing a few improvements down there at the boat landing, so I appreciate Jake on that. And the good news, which most of you already got, was that media release from the Polk County Sheriff's Office on the Polk County then included in the federal disaster declaration for public assistance. So that is a really big deal. That has nothing to do with private properties as of yet. But this here is going to help the city of Crookston recoup some of their monies that we spent during our high-water events and help us maybe with some of our mitigation efforts as we move forward. There's an informational meeting that there'll be several of us at on August 15th at the Bee Ballroom at 2 o'clock, and then it's supposed to contact Polk County Emergency Management if you have any questions on it, or you can get ahold of me too, and I'll find that out. So we're moving forward.
Tim, for that meeting, is that really just, I mean, is that something that like normal residents who do have private property affected should go to, or is that really just more for...
Yep. That is not the private stuff yet. This will be for our public infrastructure.
I know you mentioned that, but I just didn't know if there was any reason for them to go as well.
Nope, not yet. I talked to the emergency manager, and that stuff is still in the works. So we're really hoping we get that same announcement here for all of them people also, so, which would be outstanding, so.
Wonderful. Thank you.
The other thing, Tim, on as far as what we spent on the flood and everything that we've got, and we'll need a number, but what percentage of that do you think we'll get back in return?
We should get a, we should get a large portion of that back if we got all of our paperwork. I'm hoping 90-plus percent back.
Okay, super.
So, Tim, you'll be attending that meeting?
Yep, absolutely. Yep, absolutely. Probably Ryan will be there. Probably some of the most affected department heads will will all be talking about this tomorrow morning during our department heads meeting, and we'll be getting all of our paperwork together and make sure we have everything that they need so we can get credited for the efforts that we've done.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandon?
So we're getting to the point where we're doing some of our normal maintenance now. Dave was going to, we've got a couple of blacktop patches, one on woodland and mostly water main breakholes, but they're going to work on those in the next couple of weeks. We're going to wait till after Oxcart days to do some more sidewalks downtown. The EAW was released for epitome, so it's environmental assessment, so it's open for public review until the 18th. So anybody that wants to check that out and give any comments, it's open to comment. I just find it by Googling it, but it's on the MPCA website, so. Other than that, we've been getting some trees stumped and it's kind of refreshing to get back to normal, so. Levy's stuff, we're pretty, there's some sidewalks that need some work by the fire hall from the equipment being on it. Other than that, we have some sediment to clean up on the wet side of the levee. And we have to get some black dirt and some seed down, but we're getting really close to back to normal.
Are you going to seed that or sod it?
We'll price it both ways, see. We're most likely probably going to hydroseed it, be my guess, but we'll price it both ways.
Are there any residential sidewalks that you're looking at replacing or doing any fixing on? Are there any residential sidewalks that you're looking at replacing or doing any fixing on?
Um, there's, there's some areas, uh, this year will probably be, um, we, we got that, uh, that mill coming for offset joints right now. I mean, we'll, we'll get, we'll get some sidewalks done, but, um, I don't know how much time we're gonna have to, to get a lot of sidewalks done, to be honest, so. I've, I'm having a hard time finding somebody to even do the work by the fire hall right now. Two of the local contractors told me they can't get to it this year, so. Even if we wanna hire out some concrete work, I'm gonna have a hard time finding somebody, so.
Brandon, have you had a chance to look at the, um, environmental assessment worksheet?
I did, yes. Um, there's nothing that I haven't heard yet in there, um, nothing that's alarming to me, I guess. Um, I've, I, I looked through the first, I read through the first forty-five pages a couple of times, you know, it's the, the water consumption and the wastewater that he's talking about and the, the way that he's talking about it being, um, treated, it's, it's all as advertised that I'm aware of, so. There's nothing alarming in there. Right now, we'll be talking about it at department head, um, tomorrow, and there's, you know, I don't know if, I don't know if Greg's had time to look through the whole thing yet, you know, I'm not familiar on codes for... There's some, there's a lot of code stuff in that, it's pretty heavy on Greg's side, so. Um, but, well, we're gonna, we will, uh, we'll make any comments necessary before the eighteenth, so.
Thank you.
And if any of you do want the report, uh, we'll be glad to give you one at City Hall, it's a hundred and seventy pages long. Um, it is pretty heavy stuff. I, like Brandon, have been, I've been through it once on a cursory level, and I agree with Brandon, from what little I know, that the water stuff is accurate. There may be some other things in there that we need to talk about, um, that are represented. But if you wanna copy and don't wanna print it or don't have a print, we'll get you a hundred and seventy pages if you want.
It's a lot, a lot of reading on tablet, it's tough, you know, magnifying glass.
If you just highlight it, Dale, and it'll read it to ya. I can show you how to do it one time.
Looking for the condensed version from the department heads.
Yeah, the summary, the Cliff Notes.
We will be talking about that tomorrow. We can give you the Cliff Notes version at some point.
That's what we're looking for.
No, uh, seal coating this year?
No. Um, our, uh, we've gotten kind of ahead of seal coating. Um, seal coating is most effective if you, if you coat the streets five to seven years after they're put down, after I did some research, so. Um, our oiler truck is not up to snuff, so, um, we're, I'm gonna give it a couple of years where, I'm gonna look into a couple of different options, but we're most likely going to have somebody that uses an oiler all summer come and put the oil down for us, and then we'll lay the rock on top of it, so. But we are not, I do not plan to seal any streets this year.
Your crew will be happy.
Yes. They weren't disappointed, I know.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Jake? Greg ain't here tonight?
Thank you. Um, we finished up our recreational programs last week. August fourth was our last day for summer activities. Um, Andrew and I have been working on getting our fall, um, Fun Finder out. We do have registration open now for everything. Um, last week, we opened Monday, August first, and then today, we opened up our hockey registration. Um, us and the Blue Line opened up at the same time, so we have Blue Line fees and hockey fees. So, everything is open, ready to go for fall and winter programming. Um, we started third and fourth grade tackle, rookie tackle football today. Um, they had their first practice, went pretty well, was over there for a little while before I came back here. Fifth and sixth grade will start, not next week, but the week after. Um, so, just waiting on, we wanted to wait a little bit for registrations to get going, so. Parks Crew, they've been doing various jobs, um, some activity, or, um, projects around. Um, like Chief Rover said, we, we took a stroll down to Central Park today and looked at that boat landing, and, um, we tore some concrete out of there, there's a lot of rebar sticking out, it was a big safety hazard, so. Um, we kinda put a plan together to fix that for now temporarily, so, um, so boats can get in and out and without any trouble. Um, the pool, the pool is, knock on wood, been pretty good chemical-wise, so, um, maintaining that, um, I, I will be losing a lot of lifeguards at the pool. I will have one, maybe two left, um, after the fourteenth of this month. So, the word is out, um, for lifeguards, coaching, um, Crookston Sports Center, the job's there. Um, we're looking for staff. Um, I do have three coming back, but they will not be starting till August thirtieth, and Cody Brecken will be back September first, it's his first day back. Um, I have confirmed that with him, he's confirmed that with me. Um, so, I'll keep pushing for the pool. Um, there might be days where we might not open swimming, because I don't have staff to cover it. One lifeguard, I feel very unsafe having one lifeguard. You only, you can have twenty kids, but still, um, it's just unsafe, so. Um, but I'll keep, continue to work on that, so, any questions?
Jake, can, I know I mentioned to you an email that we had, um, somebody that had a concern about, um, some of the leagues, um, playing over in Grand Forks, so I was just wondering if you could just publicly kinda share a little bit about the justification for sending...
So, to my knowledge and my understanding with this is, when I took the position last September, we already joined, um, for baseball, for instance, we joined the East Grand Forks League because we do not have enough kids coming out for baseball. So, Mark Dragage and I believe Scott Butt at the time kinda joined forces, so we, we play baseball games there, we play baseball games here, we practice here in Crookston. Um, this year, we did Monday, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, um, and we always had one team playing at home, okay? Um, with football, we have seventeen kids out right now for football. That'd be seventeen kids for flag football, there's, the numbers are not there. So, I was approached this winter, um, from a guy in the Grand Forks Youth Football Association, asking if Crookston would like to join their league to have more games, to play other kids, stuff like that. So, we do practice at home, we play Saturday games in Grand Forks, in that league. But it opens up an opportunity for kindergarten all the way through fourth grade to play football, to start football. So, that's the knowledge or reasoning behind that.
Sir, is there any opportunity for the football to have some games here on a Saturday at all?
Not in their league, no.
So, they want our kids, but they won't share the wealth per se to...
Per se. But, East Grand Forks is there.
I get it, we, we want our kids to go and have this opportunity, but it should be nice if we got a gay weekend.
Yeah.
Even just one.
I think too, the, another thing with this league is, we're starting, um, a couple of years prior to, for tackle than what they normally would in Crookston, and I think at this range, I was at that meeting, that this group they have over there is, uh, a very good group, they have everything set, how coaches coach, what they coach, how they teach safety, things that maybe are missed, they're on top of it. Um, I think it's just, I think it's a great thing that the kids are starting earlier. Yes, I hear what you're saying, it would be nice to get some here too, but in the league that, that the fifth and sixth grade were doing, you know, we'd only get one weekend, and the rest of the time, we were traveling. Um, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's not a lot different, except we don't get that one weekend.
And we don't have any...
I think the group is a good group, I really do.
I got the schedule for the fifth and sixth grade, and we don't have any games this year at home. They're all on the road, every Saturday, so.
Great.
And then Jake, the only other thing, just to kinda talk about it publicly too, is that they were saying that, like, parents have to step up, otherwise your kids don't play. And I know that is not necessarily completely correct, but that we're just having a lack of volunteers in coaching positions, so that's, can you expand on that?
Coaches are, coaches are very far in between, they're, they're, they're really, excuse me, they're, they're tough to find, you know? Um, a lot of dads do help, um, but it's hard to find, you know, like, I, I'm coaching football and I coached baseball this summer because we just, we don't have the, the volunteers. We don't have the college kids or, you know, they're, they're working, but they're not coaching, and it's just kind of a fiasco, to be honest, so. We are trying hard to, to get non-parent coaches, um, but it, since I've started here, it hasn't been, if a parent doesn't coach, you don't play, so that...
It's more that they can't play if they don't have coaches, it's more, right?
Well, yeah, we, right.
So, I think maybe it was just a little, the context was a little different.
Yep, so.
Okay.
But yes, coaches are, it's, it's a tough part of the job, so.
Okay.
But...
All right, thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jake. Uh... Chad?
I'll save most of my talking for Ways and Means budget discussion, I have no report.
Okay. Darren, anything more to add, sir?
Have they filled that I T department opening yet?
Oh, I'm happy to, happy to answer that. Uh, we have, in fact, and, uh, we did hire an individual, or made an offer, and the offer was accepted. He begins Monday the fifteenth, next Monday.
Can I also just interject? I know that you guys have switched over to your new system, and, and we've had a conversation, but I've had some constituents that haven't seen all of our agendas from May till now, and just for the sake of transparency and knowing that that's something our council really values, um, that is something you guys are working on getting the rest of those agendas on, and in the meantime, if people do wanna see an agenda, they can go to our Facebook, is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
Um, so, the absence of any updated agendas, uh, on the new city website was simply due to the fact that there was a migration cutover that began in May, and the departments, uh, have not had an opportunity to post, uh, those, uh, those agendas, uh, since May. Uh, but they are, as I understand it, available on the Facebook site.
Wonderful. Um, and then also, in regards to elections and the, um, the migration, um, the understanding is that we will possibly be able to get a placeholder, at least on that page, that shares the information about the upcoming opportunities for council that are not on there, um, and that you can come to the city to get that paperwork in order to register in the meantime, correct?
Correct. As per our conversation, uh, this evening, I do intend to make that material, uh, related material available on our website tomorrow morning.
I just want it, for anybody who's listening, to know that we're in process, because I know it does take a while to migrate completely, so, thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
For Darren, apologize. Corky, have you something to add on this?
This is, uh, for Ryan, uh, we have also added one person in the financial department who started last Monday. Um, she will be assisting Ryan and Kathy as an, I believe it's account clerk. And she, if you'll notice, if you come to City Hall now, um, we've had a switching. Uh, where Ashley used to sit is where our new hiree sits for, uh, financial. Ashley has moved into the office that was, uh, the office of, uh, Jordan and Monica, and Jordan has moved over into what used to be Jake's office, uh, because he's moved out to the C S C. So, there's, uh, shifting around, uh, but we did hire Aaron as an accounts payable clerk, and that will be extremely helpful. Uh, many of the duties of that position were being performed by both Ryan, Kathy, and Ashley, and they will now be freed up to concentrate on their, their duties.
We'll have to meet and greet.
And open house.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Corky. Darren?
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, we remain to be, uh, stay super busy at the police department, uh, close to four hundred calls in the last two weeks. I'll just echo what Chief Rover and, uh, Michelle had mentioned about Night United. Again, as I've mentioned, this is our, uh, the police department's largest outreach, outreach program that we organize. It was another huge, huge success. Uh, likely accounts it might be the largest attended event or, or Night United event to date. Um, and maybe, Michelle, I hope I'm accurate, this is what I was told, that, uh, like, maybe two, over two thousand people attended? I mean, it's kinda hard to ballpark some of those numbers, but what I was kinda told is that probably north of two thousand, uh, the food vendors either sold out or indicated they had, um, the best one-day sale they've possibly had and, and, and ever, or recorded. I thought that was amazing. Um, we're having a post-event, uh, post-committee, uh, meeting on Friday, further discuss the event. What went well, we could do better for next year. And again, I just thank you everyone who attended, each vendor, and to everyone who organized, uh, the event, whether you're on the board or just, uh, staff that showed up, again, thank you so much. Ox Cart, obviously, the next large event for the city and the police department. Um, currently, we're about ninety-nine percent staffed at the police department for all the security, five Ks, everything, uh, walk runs that we're gonna be doing. Meeting with Libby, uh, the Ox Cart Chair on Thursday to discuss any last-minute details, make sure we have everything covered. Um, I think that's about it. Um, again, just thank you for your discussion on the emergency moratorium. Obviously, there was a big push behind that, very passionate about that in law enforcement. I thought it was a great dialogue, great discussion, respect and appreciate your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Willie, anything today?
Just one item. Anybody can ask you your, uh, get your, your thoughts, but, uh, we're obviously in the process too of doing, uh, budget two thousand twenty-three reviews, so, busy with that. But last, uh, Tuesday, we have a group came forward, uh, the Crookston Humane Society, with their presentation request for some A P R funding, okay? And I don't know if you've been out there in the last few months or whatever, but, uh, they certainly have made, uh, some improvements, uh, certainly more projects to be funded. So, uh, we're looking at that, I got a chance to go out there last, uh, Thursday, and, uh, you know, as far as, uh, the canine, uh, facility, uh, I think that certainly could use some improvement, but, uh, I guess I'm just kind of questioning that, do you fund the humane society in some respects?
We do, we have a contract with them for kenneling, uh, animals, well, cats and dogs, which we impound. We do that, uh, on a per-animal stave basis. Um, we have, at this point, no direct funding other than our contract with them.
Okay. But pretty satisfied with, uh, the service that you're receiving, comments you receive?
I think we are satisfied.
I like Darren. Thoughts?
Well, the police actually were out there the day I was there dropping off a cat, uh, uh, but, uh, I think it does provide a service for the community and...
We reserve five kennels, we have the ability to get a pop-up kennel, we are charged per month for the reservation of the five. I believe that's, uh, three hundred and fifty dollars a...
That's correct.
...month, and then pop-up kennel are assessed at a different rate. Um, so, yes, I believe we are satisfied, uh, one, because it's ser, good service, and two, we don't have an alternative, uh, and we need to, we need to have that for the city. Um, to my knowledge, the county does not fund it.
It's the, yeah, it's the only, uh, humane society in the county, actually.
Yep. Um, so, we're the major source of that.
Yeah, it's been funded primarily by volunteers and grants that they can get, and obviously, they're, they're active with that, but if we can help all, we'll see what happens, yes?
Yeah, I would just echo that, I know I'm not in front of a microphone, but I would just echo that, um, you know, they're, they're a great board, great to work with, it's definitely, uh, a service that we need in the city and the county, and I do know that, that some of the facilities or kennels are, are what they're needing upgraded, and I'll discuss that with Corky and I, but, again, absolute necessity for the city and county.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Start with Tom tonight.
Uh, just Night United was great, the group of people out there, I mean, it was, it was nice. And then I wanna extend my sympathies and stuff to the Baird family and Bobby, who lost his wife.
That is it?
That's it.
Thank you. Blaine?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Joe?
No, Your Honor.
Don?
Oh, just one announcement that the Ward for, uh, we'll meet this Wednesday, August tenth, at Trinity Lutheran Church, beginning at seven o'clock P M. I'm gonna do some, uh, some planning for the Board that evening. Everybody's invited, so stop by.
Hey, thank you. Clayton?
Night United, great job, a lot of people. Uh, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Steve?
Um, I just kinda wanna address the, um, when I was calling about, you know, this T H C thing or whatever, I talked to many people, and, you know, a lot of them asked me the same question as, and, you know, uh, which was a valid point is, how are we doing on housing? Um, everybody runs for election, says, what are you gonna do, get jobs and get housing? I just look at, you know, after reading through some of my notes and that, I just look, we need to get rolling on this. We got D that's gotta have thirty jobs, we got New Flyer that just did expansion, thirty jobs, with the deal with Epitome coming, they, they just made... With the deal with Epitome coming, they just made another hurdle. We have no housing. I know we don't have housing, not for those three big facilities. And that's our job as council members to provide, you know, housing. And I think we really need to, to go for it. I know Wayne had mentioned it early on about, yeah, we need to get a, a five-year plan going here. And I've got council, everybody's business hour, but at the end of the day, we got a new council coming in possibly here in January, and I think this should be a top priority. Housing for Kirkston is, we, we sold the land that was our next housing unit. We did not buy it for whatever reason, I was not here in that vote, but we gave up potential for forty houses there. Thirty houses, whatever, it was a, it was a big sum. So Bob has sold that land, so we, we don't, do we have a plan where our next housing area is going to be? Because we can't go out there, and that was the only place we could go without going to drafts. So I'm, I'm just saying, as a council, we need to move forward, have staff move forward of saying, what are we going to do for housing? It's not going to happen overnight, like anything that we do. But at the end of the day, we're going to get the ball rolling. I'm done at the end of the year, but I think it's something we need to address now, in the next two, three months. And when the new council comes in, we, we should talk about this probably three, four times a year. We haven't touched this in a year and a half. And I think it's, you know, it's my fault as anybody else's fault, but I think we need to really get working on this because it's going to take a long time to find out what we're going to do, where we're going to go. I know we have a new EDA director coming in, going to be a vital part of this. I, I just, I, I think we got to follow up in this and keep rolling on this, because it's going to be a major issue in two years, year and a half. If, if all these businesses get the hires that they want, I just think we need to get rolling on that. The other thing I got, Night to Night, great deal. Well, I mean, that was just impressive seeing those kids and the- Everybody cannot believe the prizes that you guys give away. When everybody's walking around with a bike, I mean, what, what, what a great event. The other thing is, uh, August, the downtown developments, is that the thirtieth? I think it's a Tuesday. You know, fun events. Those guys put on a great event, so if you get down there, try and get down there and support downtown and go from there.
Eva? Thanks. I know I, I sat down with Wayne and Corky regarding a strategy session, and I know we had a few items that we were going to, that we decided that were top priority, housing is one of them. I know, and I've even said that we're behind the eight ball with this. The decision was made, let's get through the preliminary budget. And then the next thing I was talking about is that I don't, I want to have a strategy session when the new person for EDA starts. That way, she's part of the conversation with us. So once she starts, I would like to sit down and have one, and then have another one right after the first of the year with a new council and, and go from there.
Sounds wonderful. The other thing I want to add is, anybody that wants to talk about running for council, I'd love to sit down with them. I mean, it's a great rewarding job, and I hope there's somebody out there that takes this for word too. And I said, they can talk to any other council member, myself, or mayor. But I just hope that we get somebody, you know, I'd like to see some younger people in here, get involved with the community stuff, because it's, it's a great thing that we sit here and do, try to do, and I just recommend it for somebody that's interested in, you know, to try and get into this, because it is a great, great program.
Thank you. Kristy?
I think I kind of mentioned some of the things already that I had. I also, you know, I was really torn about the whole issue with the distribution of TSC and what have you. And, you know, I'm sure like a lot of council members, I've been trying to do my homework, and I do have some friends who work for the US Cannabis Council. And so I do have some calls into seeing how other people have initially implemented laws and ordinances in smaller towns. And so I think that could be helpful as we're making those decisions going forward. But I appreciate everybody's thoughtful discussion on that as well. But that is all I have.
Thank you. Wayne?
Well, I'm certainly glad we didn't shut the door on a new business. It's going to be up and coming, and rather than lose it to Fisher, you know, here we go. Yeah, we've talked and talked and talked about having this, this meeting with strategy, and it seems like it gets moved. We've, we've had so many different people and with Amy and with, you know, Corky now and whatnot. This EDA director is supposedly what, September nineteenth?
That's the date that she should be starting.
You know, so hopefully, yet this fall, we can do something. And anybody that's planning on running, they will have their name out there by then, and we can include them or make sure, invite them along to do some of this stuff. Yeah, the Night to Night is always great, a good time. And it's just about fall, so think about fall cleanup and think about when we can go around with the leaves fall off and start looking at some of these places that, I mean, walking around the neighborhoods and that, there's cars that are been abandoned since nineteen, or from the twenty twenty, you know, aren't licensed. And I, I don't know, I, I really get, I, sorry Chief, I don't like that idea of, of having to rat out your neighbors because it's complaint driven. But I talked to the mayor and I, we'd like to set a date sometime for anybody on the council that would like to go take a little tour around and write down these addresses and see if we can't straighten some things out and maybe get something moving. It's about that time. That's all.
Thank you. I also like to condolences Bobby Baird family, who has previously served on our city council. Thoughts and prayers to him. Night to Night, once again, great. Thank you to UMC for allowing us to have it out there, or I should say, the police. Primary tomorrow. Polls are open from seven to eight, seven AM to eight PM. I think the sports complex ballot is there too?
Yes, the, the football field track is on the ballot tomorrow in the primary. And two polling places.
Yep.
Presbyterian Church and the-
St. Paul's.
St. Paul's Lutheran Church.
And just to remind, everybody in the city of Kirkston should have received a voter registration at your polling location. So remember that is where you go, even though we did do our redistricting this year. So you could have voted at that location for many, many years, but this year it's different since we had to change-
You don't have to bring that card with you, do you?
No.
And one more item is filing for city council. And the mayor candidate is open until the sixteenth. And on the sixteenth, Ashley will be here until five PM, so. So all I got, we have Ways and Means tonight following council, so nothing else coming before council. We are adjourned.
Evening, all. The agenda that I got, the airport budget discussion, building official budget study, information technology budget. And we will start with the airport. Thanks for being here, Lowell.
Yep. Ryan and I went over most of the budget items here. He raised everything that, the percentage on all the utilities, which is kind of standard across all of them, I believe. Our biggest thing coming up next year is we're on the start of a ten-unit T-hanger. It's like a million-four project with the local share being the city of like eighty-two thousand dollars.
Just so you hear that, we did confirm that with our consultants. Getting a million-dollar hangar and our share is approximately eighty-two to ninety-two thousand dollars.
Yep.
We're building a new hangar?
A new ten-unit T-hanger, roughly ten.
Okay.
Once, when you do that, you rent these out then? Do they, does, does the rent help? Do we charge enough rent to pay, to make it pay that we're renting these things?
Yes. Is that over like a ten-year period of time, fifteen-year period of time? What is that to, to make the money back on something like that? This year, they haven't made us, the previous one, they made us do a business plan. And it's kind of early in this stage, they haven't asked for anything yet. With the rent, there's forty-four T-hangers that are rentable now, that the city owns. So with that, we took that amount, and I can't remember previous what the payback was, but it's, it's, it was okay on the last set, so we're roughly ten more units on top, so.
Is this our money, or is this we borrowing from another airport?
So a majority, the eighty-eight is our money, the city's money. The million-four is, we get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, NIPIS funds they call it. We can only bank four, three years of that, you can play with the four. And they also have some bill money, they call it right now, which is some additional funding. We have to borrow from a couple airports that'll get paid back. But that's really not, it is and it isn't through the city. It's, it's-
A trade-off for me.
Yeah, it's a trade-off over, over time.
We built, we get to borrow from them, and then they get to borrow back from us.
Yep.
It's kind of a reciprocal thing.
Fissure cycle.
If, if you don't use your hundred and fifty, you can only bank it like three years. Otherwise, it goes back into the pot. So one way to keep it is to borrow it out to somebody, and then those funds start back when you do it. Other than that, that's the biggest, that's kind of what we got going for twenty-three. And just the crack ceiling that's, we try to put on every year.
Is there any conversation about getting the signage fixed on the major building? I think it said Ruston last time I saw it, or something, that I was missing letters.
Oh, that's the old boat storage building.
Okay.
With-
It just looks horrible driving by it.
Well, I was, we were going to just take it all down because the letters broke.
Yeah.
But the building's so faded, it's still there. You take the letters down. So I had talked to, is it Travis at the high school?
Travis, all right.
Yeah, he was gonna, we were looking into getting a couple sheets of that material, and they were going to cut them out for us. So, yeah, we're, he had mentioned that he got some students that could probably do that. Depends on what we want to have on there too, so we got to have a-
I think if like anything that isn't like broken, or like, looks like it's an abandoned building would be great.
Could you bring to us the airport community what they want on that, or sign?
We haven't done that one yet. We talked about the, the sign at the highway a little bit previously, but not on this one.
How many private phone hangers is there?
None.
None?
None.
Okay.
And that's, we got that in the works also. We have some locations set aside for that.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, great. Good job.
It's the best budget I've seen so far.
Thank you.
Thanks Lowell.
Are we doing the building official, Jack?
Hi, we'll be doing that at his place.
Okay.
Ryan cannot be here, and that was, he may not know Greg is gone. His father died.
Oh, God. Father died?
So where are we on?
This is the information technology presentation. Chad's here.
Good evening, everyone. I did have an opportunity to visit with Ryan today, and I'm prepared to give you a quick rundown on the two thousand twenty-three IT budget and then answer questions that you might have for me. So just going through the major highlights, the salaries for both the IT director and the information technology technician position were increased by the three and a half percent, along with the health insurance to go along with that. Supplies, AKA expensed items such as, for example, keyboards, mice, peripherals, those were increased by five hundred, and that was just based on history of spending from two thousand twenty-two.
That's the two hundred account, four one nine two zero, zero two hundred.
Correct. The contractual has the Halsted Telephone Company agreement in it. Initially, that was a three-year agreement, and that was actually extended out through some negotiations to a five-year agreement with, with some cost savings involved with that. We, in two thousand twenty-two and prior, had a combination of oh-four-three-three, which is actually subscriptions and dues, as well as professional fees at oh-three-one-two. Those were consolidated together into oh-four-three-three. I have a quick rundown of what that oh-four-three-three is comprised of for two thousand twenty-three. They're there in the notes, and I'll just kind of hit them at a fifty-thousand-foot level. That includes our parking rec registration software system, our ERP or financial system, Axon, which are the body worn cameras, and in-squad car cameras, Zoom licensing, which is what we use for our streaming, for city council, and for various meetings, Office 365, which is our Microsoft Office licensing, which was new in twenty-two, Civic Plus, which is our website licensing, Net Fortress, which is our phone system, Managed Print Services, and e-faxing services through Marco, our GIS licensing, our document imaging system as it is, which is Paper Vision, our Zerker licensing, which is our police department records management system, or RMS, and then Google TV, which is some streaming that we make use of in the EOC and across all departments. In oh-five-three-oh, which is my major capital equipment fund, there are four items for two thousand twenty-three. We're on year two of three of the workstation replacement project. We replaced fifteen workstations, or will replace fifteen workstations in twenty-two. We plan to do fifteen again in twenty-three and then complete that in two thousand twenty-four. All department heads at this point have the new Surface Pro platform, and it seems to be working very well. And that is the upgrade that we are looking at across all departments. Mobile workstation for squad cars, we call those GTAC units. That's basically a hardened computer that lives in the police squad cars. We have planned to add one of those in two thousand twenty-three, and then in each subsequent year. And then we will roll the oldest one on the fifth, on the fifth year. We have the Axon Fleet Three camera system that replaces the aged, out of support watch guard camera or DDR system that we have in the squad cars today. And then I mentioned the Halsted fiber optic upgrade. The last thing that I'll, I'll mention is that the unrestricted funds, the four hundred and fifty thousand that was approved for IT spending, that purchasing vehicle is keeping much of the expense of the IT infrastructure upgrade out of two thousand twenty-three and the next subsequent year capital equipment budget.
Good question on that, Halsted fiber optic upgrade. What is that? I mean, thirty-eight thousand dollars, and you got it again as a yearly thing. They don't pay for any of that? I mean, to come in and, what is the upgrade for, for our side of it, or?
Yeah, happy, happy to address that. So with the, with the five-year now agreement, what we're looking at is effectively for eleven facilities, it's head-ended, the bandwidth delivery is going to be at the police department and the new data closet slash armory that's being constructed there. The other ten facilities have a three hundred megabit per second connection back to that data closet at the PD. And we're getting a gigabit worth of bandwidth made available to all of the buildings through that system. So each one of the buildings is two hundred and fifty dollars a month, and then there's a fixed cost for the bandwidth that's made available to all of them. And that comprises the, the thirty, there was a revision, it's a little, we have here the thirty-eight seven hundred, which was the initial figure for the three-year agreement. I'd have to take a real close look again at it, and I'll get an updated number for you, but it's about four to five hundred dollars less expensive. So it's certainly within that thirty-eight thousand ballpark. Other questions?
So, um, the IT, IT department, does it have any opportunities for revenue? There's no revenue?
So, we do not have any revenue, uh, generating, uh, services that we provide. We do act, uh, for, or as a, I'll, I'll refer to it as technical consulting, um, for, uh, affiliated agencies such as, such as Cheetah. Um, and so, um, we've, in the past, operated with pass-through billing. So, if we've acquired equipment, um, and, uh, install that in, uh, Cheetah, for example, um, we've done pass-through billing to them. We have not, at this point, done any kind of billing for, uh, the IT department's time, either myself or the new IT technician. Okay.
But you've also installed, um, several softwares that have helped with the processing of, of us collecting funds for sports and rec and things of that nature as well, correct?
Correct.
So, and it's on a way, we're utilizing them to make it easier to collect money and things of that nature.
Correct.
Any other questions?
So, you said at some point in time, um, our, our city computers are gonna get off the Google platform and get on the Microsoft platform, is that?
That, that's already complete. Um, so, we did migrate, uh, from the Google platform to the Office three-sixty-five, otherwise known as Microsoft three-sixty-five. Yep.
But the, oh, I know what I was gonna ask, instead of the Chromebooks, are they gonna be replaced with, um?
Yes, so I'm actually, um, I'm prioritizing the Office, uh, workstation replacements across the departments. But I am looking potentially at twenty-twenty-four, year three of three, for workstation replacements. So, council Chromebooks would then be replaced.
No, I don't know if this involves any type of cost, but I'd really like to see on our laptops, when we have interactive things on the screen, sometimes those screens, even from here, they're large screens. I, I can't see them very well from sitting here. It'd be nice if there was a way to interact them on our laptops, so when we're sitting here, we can, we can look right at our screen and see what the public is seeing on the, on the screen. Is that, is that something that's?
I have some ideas along those lines. Um, I'll, I'll likely need to consult with the managed service partner, H.B. Light and Sound, that we use to contract to put the initial streaming platform in.
Is there, there's a cost in that by doing that?
There would be cost in that. Um, there is some expansion capabilities, I'll call it, of the existing system that we should be able, we, there should be a path to do what you're asking for, um, without a complete system uplift, so.
Because, I mean, I don't do this often, but every once in a while, in a mother, in other communities, I see city councils working on, on, on the TVs, and I look at them, and they all have screens in front of them that when people bring presentations, they're looking at the screen right there.
Absolutely.
And that, that's, you know, gotta be handy for them.
Absolutely. Um, and, and I think what you, you might be referring to there, um, is council agenda software that lets the individual council people follow through point by point with the agenda. That would be a, a different technology solution than having a, a, a screen in front of you that would show what the public is seeing through the streaming platform. So, that would actually be two separate solutions.
All right.
Uh, and two separate costs associated.
Can't you maybe do like something that's not quite as extensive, but doing like something like a, a drive that we all have access to and can have things uploaded to, or utilizing the streaming service we already currently use? If one, somebody wants to see what's being put up there, that you're putting there, we should be able to utilize their.
Yeah, great, great question. I, I think being able to see, uh, what is being streamed to the public, each council member individually, that's something that could be achieved by sort, again, working with a managed service partner and getting their recommendations. But sourcing a, a screen that could be installed at each one of your desks. Uh, one of the big limiting problems there is the, the desks that you have are quite old, and they do not accommodate, they don't accommodate wiring very easily.
They're solid.
They're, they're very solid, they're, they're open, I think. They're heavy, there's not, there's no cable access into them, so, um, could, could they be retrofitted to accommodate, uh, a screen at each location? Yes. Um, would we be able to do that at a cost that we, uh, would not, that, that would not be as expensive as what we spent to get the streaming platform put in place initially? Yes. Uh, now, I would not recommend that we try and open source, is the term, a agenda, um, delivery platform. Uh, I've worked with multiple platforms like that, uh, in my previous positions. They require support, um, they, they're not something that can just be easily cobbled together, is the term that I'll use.
I just wonder if like, using OneDrive or something like that, where if we have a link to it in our emails or something, and can follow along by just pulling that up, or even having it downloaded, and saving us the cost and energy to do that. I think there might be some other ways that we can address that without having to get screens at our desks, or, you know.
Right. Uh, uh, again, I, as I understand, we're, we're talking about two separate solutions here. Um, one would be being able to see what's being presented out, the other would be having the agenda available for someone to review. Um, OneDrive is a platform that we certainly could look at, delivering, uh, a copy of the agenda out. But remember the, the revisions that are made to that agenda before it's actually published today? You receive them in a packet, in a, in a paper packet. Um, and there's a PDF that's generated as well. Sometimes up to the day of delivery, there are modifications that are made to those agendas. Um, OneDrive is, i- is not a platform that has easy access to go in and make those sorts of modifications, redactions, those sorts of things that are specific to agendas.
Yeah.
Um, that's why agenda, specialized agenda software exists.
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm happy to pull some quotes, so that we can consider what the cost of those systems are. Um, I know from experience that when you try to use a system that was not specifically designed for a purpose, an open-source solution, you don't always get exactly what you would hope out of it.
I mean, just like going through these budgets, I mean, if, you know, everybody gets a printout and stuff like that. But I mean, what does everybody do with these after they're done? We throw them away probably, and, or put them somewhere. If you look at some of your guys, I'd say you guys probably got budgets from nineteen ninety-three. I've sat at some of your guys' desks, and there's like, it's like, so anyhow, I'm just saying, you know, we're, we're.
Save a tree.
You know, we're talking about being up with the times, you know, different things. We, we gotta get our city council chambers more modern. I, I, I feel it's, it's, you know.
I agree.
Better lighting would be good.
Move that post.
I just don't think this year would be a good year, twenty-three, but it's gonna be a good year.
No, I, I know, but however that happens, whether it's a five-year plan or something like that, I think we'd need to start gearing towards maybe, you know, then when you change these desks, everybody that's on the council has to take theirs home.
Right. Must be moved by a sitting person or.
Pulling, pulling quotes, uh, for both of those two solutions, council agenda packet software, um, and, uh, some screen improve, we'll call them technology improvements to the existing council chambers. That's something I don't think would require a five-year plan. It's something in twenty-twenty-three I could do the research on and bring for a twenty-twenty-four consideration.
It's, now that we're getting to be online, people are looking at us, and it's like, you know, we should all be wearing white wigs behind these desks and stuff, it seems like, so.
You, you need technology solutions to let you stay current with the demand of current times, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm the substitute building official. Greg is not here, obviously, Ryan's not here. Um, this is a very straightforward budget. It's about, uh, eight hundred dollars more than last year. Uh, there are really no differences, other than you look at the notes. Um, we put a good three-point-five percent increase in salary, uh, that we applied to all, and health insurance adjustment, and then office supplies, and maintaining the budget really basically, as you see, uh, current budget, one fifteen, one fifty-two, projected one fifteen, nine seventy-one. Not much change, only the increases. Um, one of the questions I've talked to Greg about, and so has Ryan, is any potentiality for fee generation? Many of the fees are set by the state, uh, so there's not a lot of wiggle room for fee generation.
We need to build more houses, we're blessed.
That would go to, Councilman, that would go to your housing.
Right.
Yes. And I, I will tell you that our new EDA director has significant housing experience, uh, building, maintaining, housing. I think she will bring, um, a lot of insight into that particular issue. Uh, just so y'all know, we've prepared a, a press release for her. We've sent it to her for her review, we just haven't received the guy. Uh, she will be here, uh, this week, meeting her for a couple of hours. I can't remember if it went there Thursday, but, uh, we will be talking about getting her up and rolling and, uh, expect her to come back right, start right online. Do you have any questions about this budget?
Nope.
So, can I just clarify the professional fees, then? Because we were at ten thousand current budget, and they're going down to two. Does that mean that, that Greg will have his licensing that will no longer need with Seth, too?
We hope so, yes.
Okay. Okay, are we gonna have confirmation on that sooner or later?
He does have some incentives to do that.
Okay.
Yeah. And just, uh, for your information, we are taking some steps regarding some of the, um, dilapidated buildings, maybe some legal fees involved with that. But, um, we're taking some steps to get those situations addressed and remedied. So.
About, uh, what is our incentive, housing incentive right now? Do we have?
I do not know that. I don't know that.
I mean, we talked about that a couple of years ago, that we're gonna do this, and this, and this, and here we are with no, anything. I mean, I think it's something we need to address, too. What, what do we want for incentives? Are we gonna give them? I mean, that whole Barrett Street is, was all incentive-driven housing. Uh, given that, the north end of that, we haven't, you know, there's no incentives there. Uh, it's one of those things that, you know, I think we need to look at that, too, about, are we gonna have incentives to get people to build houses here? Um, I mean, it's another thing we need to work on, you know, to.
Well, the incentives, too, but I think also, uh, you know, I've been preaching for years, I don't think we market our town well enough, neither. I mean, you get more bang for your house building here than you can across the river.
But if you get jobs, I mean, like I said, D's did their job, and New Flyer's doing their job about getting jobs here. I mean, it's kind of our thing that we're supposed to be doing, too, but, like I said, if we don't have the housing, I mean, that's, that's huge, very huge.
Well, I'd like to see us be very intentional about it, and to actually go through our housing report, go through our Kirkston, was it twenty thirty-two, report, and actually take those things into consideration when we're thinking about our next five-year plan, and making it very intentional based on what we're seeing as needs, and seeing what the type of populations we're looking to encourage to come here, to make sure that we're not stagnant in our growth. And I think that we have spent lots of money on those reports, and they have good information. And I think that those should be what we build our five-year plan on.
Well, yeah, I mean, we did a housing study a few years ago, and I think, personally, I think that housing study's been collecting dust since we, we've gotten it.
Printed it, yeah.
I don't, I don't agree with that. There's a lot of things on there you wouldn't have had if you hadn't had that.
No, I'm saying that we haven't really.
Read into it.
Exactly, read into, looked into it, implemented some of the things in there.
And, and, and that's still an old document, you know, that's got a pro, uh, a five-year plan off of that. But at the end of the day, we had no idea that D was adding on, we had no idea that New Flyer's adding on. We had no idea about Epitome Energy, if they happened to come. So, I mean, that, that's, to me, is not up to date anyway. You know, we know we're gonna need housing, period. And it's one of those things, right now, if everybody hired what they say they're gonna hire, it'd be a, a eighty at Epitome, thirty at D, and thirty at whatever, at New Flyer. So, you take all them and add them, that's a whole housing development. I mean, like I said, we gave up the best housing development we had, because we didn't, wouldn't mitigate it. I think we made a big mistake there, and I think it's gonna come back and haunt us, because our next process that we spent thousands, thousands of dollars to go across the road at, uh, behind drafts, we have nothing there. We got millions of dollars of worth of infrastructure to put in there. We had it right on the line on that property that, that Bob was gonna sell us, and I think we made a big mistake there. And I hope we can get a plan to say, you know, this is where we're going with housing. Because right now, we don't have a, a new housing development anywhere in the town, and we need one.
Well, the other thing, and I, and I don't disagree necessarily with what you're saying, I, but I mean, I, since I've been on the council, I've been at those strategy sessions, and all, it seems like to me, all we did is we get together and talked about a bunch of stuff, and then we all went home, and nothing ever happened from it.
I think next steps, and actually having actionable items, um, and then also like checking in every three months to make sure that we're still going in the right way.
So, wh- when we do this, I think the topics that we discuss have to be assigned, and then like Chrissy is saying, followed up on. I mean, we can't just go there and have a strategy session and talk about, yeah, okay, yeah, we need this, this, and this, and then. I mean, 'cause, 'cause, can somebody prove to me from the last strategy sessions that I've been at, what has become of them, other than a wasted Saturday?
Right. And you know, the other thing with this is that, you know, we always say, well, we're, we're not gonna do anything because we have somebody else coming in. Now, we have an EDA director. Well, we're waiting for administrator. We're always gonna have that, always gonna be waiting for somebody.
How does, how does it get, I mean, because one of those people are typically, it's assigned to.
Right.
So, when they leave, then what happens, I mean?
That's why I said, we have to have a plan, the council's gonna take care of this, because we're gonna go through administrators way after him.
Yeah.
We're gonna go through EDA people way after him.
Yeah.
Well, maybe not, but, but it's one of those things that us as a council, I mean, that's where you put stuff on the agenda and keep it on there till you do something with it.
Well, I think if you have a five-year strategy, that that should be the guiding light, regardless of who's in any of the positions that you're talking about. And so, if you're really thoughtful about it and actually have actionable items, I think we could move forward with it. And that's what we need to start with.
Along, along with the housing, one of the things that, you know, if I do run again, that's gonna be a priority for me is, you know, some more daycare in this town, housing, and then daycare. I mean, if we got all these businesses coming to town, that, them two have to go hand in hand, so.
Yeah.
But you know, you can only feed it so long, and you got nobody biting on it, it's, that's a real tough thing with daycare. With the housing thing, so what, what's happening with that apartment house behind Casey's? What's going on over, you know, do we make a hell of a deal to, to a, a contractor that's gonna move in here and actually do something, you know, to lock things off, or to try and put in some amenities, to get that water fixed? I mean, what do you gotta do? We don't have that kind of money or that kind of knowledge with us right here. It needs to, it, you need to have someone that, that, that wants to come in here and, and wants to do something, and, and we make it appealing to them.
To answer your question, I have called to APG a number of times, left messages, have had absolutely no response.
So, do we think that in the history there, was it someone on our side dropping the ball? Or is it the ball on that side that's been dropped? Well, if he's not returning on the calls to say that somebody on our side is dropping the ball, it's kind of hard to find out. Well, I thought you.
That was the first time we dropped the ball.
Right.
And give another chance, and then nothing.
We have heard absolutely nothing since that April.
The ball has flipped.
Council meeting. Um, I've made it on my calendar to call. Um, I would say I've made at least four calls, plus a direct, uh, quite frankly, direct contact with his dad. Uh, we had a meeting in my office about other matters, and I said, if you're talking to your son, please have him call us, have him contact me, because we're sitting on APG.
I think that's true, I think, you know, it's got late in the year, and that's, well, I was thinking, the other day, I drove by there, we're gonna run into the same thing, in case, uh, cold weather stays, and you won't be able to start.
Uh, we gotta hear from them first before.
There's a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
Exactly.
But we have, we have continued contact. I, it's just been every time, leave a message. That's what I've done.
But I mean, do we wine and dine any developers? You know, do we know a developer in the area that would say, you know, come on over? And just like what they had done by the Legion, when they were gonna put up the, that apartment house, and they were gonna have some, uh, retail places and that.
NGLG architects.
You know, is there someone like that, that's got some stones, and has got some cash, and would be willing to take on? You know, because like you say, we're getting, we're kind of landlocked, other than up by the arena out there. And it'd take a pretty penny, but, you know, you can make it.
but you know, you can make it, make it work. And, but you just, you gotta have somebody that knows how to do that.
Well, I mean, I know everybody says that that land north of the arena is like, not good, but when I talked to some of the old timers where I live, they said, man, used to fish here. You know, so I mean, this land that I'm currently got a house on, it wasn't good either. So I mean, that stuff out there's gotta be better, I think, from what they're describing to me than what I was, what I'm at, based on 20, 30 years ago, you know?
Well, there's things that have to be done for the.
Right.
Infrastructure's what's expensive out there, but nothing out there.
I have some. Well, no, but you do have some.
Pretty sure there was a six or seven million dollar bill when we looked at it. We've paid WSN at least four times since I've been on this council to develop that. Came with a plan, showed it, put it on the shelf. Two years later, yep, do another plan. Forty thousand dollars later, there'd be another one. And it's like, we've done nothing with it, because nobody wants to spend the money on the infrastructure. You know, and it goes back into the bonding, whether we bond for it, whatever. It's just a lot of money to get that thing established, and nobody wanted to take that dive. I mean, we've had housing, I mean, I look at Bob's lots, he's almost solo, I think he's got four left. You know, the ones in the cul-de-sac, I think there's only three left in those cul-de-sacs. I mean, those are beautiful places for homes, and they're selling, you know, it's.
Yeah, but we need to look at, we need to look at, those are, I mean, what I would consider higher-end houses, you know, but we need to also look at some, maybe some affordable housing for people as well. I mean, you know, all those houses out there to buy a lot for, you know, whatever he's selling, $50,000, I think is what I heard, and then with today's lumber prices, to put it on top of that, I mean, that's.
Crazy number.
I mean, you know, with some of the incomes, with the jobs that are being paid out at, you know, New Flyer, those folks just coming in, unless they have something else, they can't afford those houses.
I think we need to look at price points.
Right.
The thought is, you know, even that study for housing or whatever it said in there, I mean, the theory is that people that live in their house for 25 years, got money, but away its house is paid for, they're gonna move up to these places because they can afford them, which opens up to lower-income housing.
Right.
The vicious cycle, and I mean, that requires very good about that, states it right out, how the system works or should work.
Right.
And it's one of those things, if we don't have the housing to get to the higher end, or the middle end, or you wanna call it, the low ends will always open up. I mean, you know, we don't want 100% rental units either in town. It's one of those things that.
Well, I think the rental with, I think, you know, it goes up and down over decades. I think right now rentals are gonna be more popular than anything with the interest rate going up to who knows what it's gonna go up to, and then I just think a lot of younger people are just gonna be content with renting.
I think with our rent, they have renting without the interest rate.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what they do. They don't want old things, they don't want them all, they don't want.
That's right about that.
And we did put a lot of eggs in one basket with APG. I mean, we've sat there and we've waited. Now, if I'm not mistaken, it was April, May, June, July, now or in August, I think that was the last meeting.
I mean, to force his hand in any way, could we send him a certified letter and say, you know?
We don't have any purchase agreement, we don't have any.
They got no right to that land, right?
Exactly, there is no option, there's no purchase agreement. This was all talked about, the documents were ready, but there was no legal entity created. That's what we're waiting for.
I'd really like to see the new EDA come in and really kinda have some of those conversations with other individuals who might be interested in developing and really kind of make that a focus of what they're doing as well.
Well, I've got that written down here, to talk with her on whatever day she comes.
Now, now that the EDA reports to us, that'll be easier to direct that person to do that, so.
Yep.
She's, she will be an employee of the City of Community Development Director.
Great.
All right, that it, we are adjourned. Thank you.